Alderman Poulos.
Here.
Alderman Genon.
Here.
Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Hurt.
Here.
Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. If we could stand for the pledge allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, once again, started the meeting, we have an opportunity for people to speak, so we have a public comment. I've got, where two people have signed up.
No, this is...
Oh, that's the taxation, I'm sorry. Apologize, reading the wrong one.
Do you want me to go check it?
Is there anybody, I don't see anybody signed up, and/or has anybody wished to speak besides the taxation? You're talking about the taxation?
Nope.
Nope?
Besides property taxes and/or the budget, anything else?
Got anything else, Bill, besides that?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up.
You can count it as taxation or budget, whatever you want, I don't know, but I'm shocked, and it's my own fault for not being attentive more, but I'm shocked that this city offers health insurance and a pension to a part-time elected official. It's incredible that you're still doing that. We've had two years at the county before we got a change, and you know what it did? It made better representatives out of those people. I encourage you to do just like Dylan Parker said, cancel that right now, today, if you can.
Thank you. Was there anybody else that wished to speak? Was it? We're not about, not, we're preferred to stay away from budget and tax, the property tax. If you've got any other issues, you'll have an opportunity on the other ones to talk also.
Okay.
Okay? So if that's, that's fine, if you don't mind waiting and...
This is property taxes, sir?
Well, this is anything but that, and we will, we will open the meeting up for that here shortly.
Okay.
Okay? Later in the agenda, we've got a public meeting, open meeting, that we'll open it up for those comments. Okay?
Yeah, we actually have two different public hearings.
All right, anything else, anybody want to speak about anything else besides property tax or budget? Okay, thank you very much, we will continue to move on. Item number six.
Minutes of the November 25th, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number seven.
Minutes of the executive session of November 25th, 2019.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, this update, got a couple items here. Winter-spring activity guide, the new winter-spring activity guide for the Park and Recreation Department is now out. Check out the many activities available, including dad-and-daughter date night, spring Easter, or, ah, spring egg hunt, cooking classes, and many other events and activities. To see the complete listing of the many opportunities available, go to www.rigov.org. Road closures to through traffic. Ridgewood Road between 85, 85th and 86th Avenue West, beginning on Monday, December 9th, 2019, Ridgewood Road between 85th and 86th will be closed to through traffic to complete a sewer repair. Access across the repaired area located approximately 100 feet south of 85th Avenue West will be maintained via a detour route along 14th Street West for connection with 78th Avenue West and 92nd Avenue West. The 43rd Annual Children's Holiday Party is on Wednesday, December 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Martin Luther King Community Center, 6:30, 9th Street. The party includes photos with Santa and Mrs. Claus, crafts, games, and snacks. All children accompanied by an adult are welcome through the party, through the party, most appropriate for children between 3 and 12 years old. This party is generously supported by the Rock Island Kiwanis and Royal Neighbors of America. Sign up for a letter from Santa, the North Pole is a bit far to go. Post a letter so all Rock Island Public Library locations are accepting requests for a letter from Santa. Forms for the library's letters from Santa program will be taken through Saturday, December 14th, at all Rock Island Public Library locations. To participate, fill out a letter from Santa, request a form, leave it in the Letters for Santa box, Santa will respond with a personalized letter to your child or grandchild before Christmas holidays. Hmm, that's what they wish for. That's all I have for that. Item number nine.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a truth and taxation public hearing for discussion on a proposed property tax increase for the City of Rock Island for 2019.
So I will close, I will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing. So now we have two people that, for that have signed up. Jeffrey Rice, come on up, please.
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Rice, I live in Rock Island at 3515 17th Street, have lived there for 20 years. Prior to that, lived on 26th Avenue in Rock Island. My alderman is Mr. Spaghetti's, 3rd Ward. The information I want to share with you tonight comes from my property tax statement, and I did the math the way I was taught in junior high school. The smaller number gets divided by the larger number, and you can therefore arrive at a percentage. I did my math, and that's why I'm here. I also have a notice of property assessment increase for where we live, and if I'm wrong about anything that I'm about to present to you, I'll be the first to apologize. Ladies and gentlemen, in preparation to address this council, I messaged a friend expressing my concern over increasing property taxes in Rock Island. He said, well, you just want to, the city to cut employees, implying to me that that, that there was no other choice. Here's my property tax statement. It shows municipal tax, and the third column over shows the amount dedicated to pensions. I did the math, and the amount that goes to cover pensions is shockingly out of proportion. I answered no to employee cuts, but instead of public sector pensions, what's wrong with workers having 401Ks, like millions of other citizens? My suggestion is for our local politicians, city and county, who are closest to their constituents, to push back against the pension monster eating our lunch and our children's future. We have to face the truth. Ballooning public sector pensions are destroying our fiscal integrity. There is no desire to shortchange workers. Cut people, lay them off, none of that. We see how successfully the private sector has overcome this pension monster, and you must too. Partisan county board members who voted to raise taxes last month justified it by stating, "Don't blame us. We don't like raising taxes. Our hands are tied. Pensions are the law. We're mandated to pay. We have no choice but to vote for more taxes." Partisans then went on to further chastise citizens by blaming them for gassing up in Iowa and shopping there, too. I wish that you, our city representatives, could have been at the county board meeting last month to see the condescending arrogance displayed. These partisans then said, "We hope you show up at Rock Island, counsel, to protest them like you're doing to us." At that moment, I felt compelled to do just that, and speak at this council meeting to push back against elected officials rubber-stamping more taxes and hiding behind the "it's not our fault" excuse. If this city council is truly nonpartisan, what is stopping you from speaking truth to power? You can help all citizens by doing much-needed heavy lifting. Go to Springfield Power Brokers and tell them our state, counties, and cities are being destroyed by raising taxes to make up for mandatory pension deficits. It's your responsibility and high time to change the rules going forward by which public sector employees are compensated. Without pension restructuring, many homeowners will be taxed to near bankruptcy while property values plummet and assessments rise. We expect our elected representatives to listen to us, not Springfield, and we say, "Fix it and stop this insanity." Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we are not hiding behind it, just to let you know, we, we understand. And by the way, just, the Illinois Supreme Court has ruled, the state legislators tried to change the pension, the Illinois Supreme Court ruled against that, and so that is all still at the state. I don't know about other people at this, at this table, but I personally have talked to legislators to try to, you know, work on some kind of change. They are made some, are attempting to make some changes, that with the consolidation of the police and fire pensions with other cities, along with potentially stretching out, um, the, the, they originally had it 90% funded by 2041, they're looking at maybe stretching that out, but, so they're looking at, trying to make some changes, but the Illinois Supreme Court said that they couldn't, it's constitutional deal on the pensions for the police and fire, and...
...for the Supreme Court would be a wonderful idea.
I agree, but we don't have control. We'll continue to fight, though, I'll continue to fight for exactly what you're talking about, but those are officially the state issues and not city, so thank you, though, for your concern. Cincola, I think it is?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Kelly Cincola, from the 6th Ward. Mr. Poulos is my alderman. I'd rather eat a spoonful of dirt than have to stand up and do this, but somebody asked you. Um, I had to write down what I was going to say, I'm usually doing 25 different things at a time. Last hearing on the 2019 taxes, one person spoke up, he compared Illinois to Iowa. More than two of you that's still here said you were sick of hearing about Iowa. To be honest, we're a little disrespectful and demeaning to that citizen when the forum was closed. Nobody here is more fed up about hearing it than I am. I work the Quad City Market day in and day out as a dual-licensed real estate agent of 18 years. Some of you met with local agents and home builders within the last couple of years. One of them, born and ra, I'm shaking, I can't believe I'm shaking, um, born and raised in Rock Island, raised his children in Rock Island, they all went through the Rock Island school system, one of the biggest producers in the board for many, many years, sold primarily Rock Island homes, Rock Island County. After that meeting, we met at a continuing education course. Within weeks, he sold his house and he moved to Iowa, one of the biggest producing agents selling primarily in Rock Island. At least one of you have said that you've been meeting with retirees to speak on taxes and budgets, but I bet none of you have sat across the table from an elderly, elderly woman who has owned her home for over 45 years. I sat across from this woman, I listened to her cry, she had $20 left after buying her She was being forced to move due to not being able to afford the taxes on her minimal social security. I sat at a table that was from the 1970s, she had no cable, she didn't have new carpet, she didn't even have a phone. The phone that she was given was given to her by a senior citizens organization. There was nothing excessive in her home. She was living without more comforts than you all surely get to enjoy at your homes. It was heartbreaking. I have a client, over 60, that doesn't get a pension, just sold her home in Illinois, her taxes were over 80, or, over $8,000. She bought the same floor plan in Iowa, same square footage, her taxes, same price, $4,700. I'd venture to guess that many of the receiving pensions would be taking off, heading for another state as well, if Iowa quit taxing pensions. First-time homebuyers, they're beginning to look in Iowa. Primarily, I did my business in Illinois. I like being in Illinois. I've been in Rock Island, same house, I've just lived there 16 years. Nobody can sell a Rock Island property better than a Rock Island resident. But first-time homebuyers, they're beginning to look in Iowa because they can afford the higher-priced homes in Iowa, and the taxes are lower. Many times the lenders call us and say, "I'm sorry, taxes have thrown you out, you're down to a lower ta, or you're down to a lower purchase price." So we're losing those first-time homebuyers. Since some of you are numbers people here, and I know I'm going to get some eye rolls, which is okay, I have four kids, two of them daughters, so roll away, but I'm going to make a comparison, and I know you're sick of hearing it, and I'm sick of hearing it too, I deal with it day in and day out. Rock Island properties sold in 2019 thus far, as of yesterday. The average days on the market, and I'm comparing it to Davenport, honestly, um, sold properties for 2019, the average days on the market in Rock Island is 44. Davenport's not too far behind with average, or ahead, with the average days on the market of 34, so we're pretty close there, right? Here's where we get in trouble. The average sales price in Rock Island is $106,000. The average sales price in Benton, or Davenport, was $166,000. That's a $60,000 difference. I know Davenport's bigger, we have plenty of room to expand in southwest Rock Island. Why aren't they expanding there? Taxes. They can't get the homes sold for what they have to build them for. Taxes on my property are assessed about $132,000, $133,000, I'm currently paying $4,100 in taxes. I could buy my same home in the same comparable neighborhood and the same size in Iowa, maybe for $138,000, and my taxes would be $2274. In Rock Island, we have zero retail, unless I want to get groceries, or I want to go to the pharmacy. I don't have anywhere that I can go buy coats, I can buy shoes, I can buy anything, I can't run to a Target, I can't run to a Walmart. I average over eight hours a day in my car. I no longer fill my tank in Illinois. I can't afford to. I could afford to, I'm not going to afford to, I can drive one mile, and I can get that same gas for $2.18. I bet I'm not the only one in this room. I get that's an Illinois issue, it's not a city issue, it's not your fault, but affects those that are here. We hear that withholding is less in Illinois, car stickers are less, that's all going up, and I'm not a tax professional, but to do the math, doesn't take much to know that many people are fleeing the state of Illinois in record numbers. I do have two questions that may answer some of the questions. From what I understand, senior freezes also increase when the increase is across the board, unless that's changed. Has that changed, does anybody know? Senior freezes, do they increase when it's increased across the board?
I don't know.
Okay. It used to, because I think that seniors are under the impression that their taxes aren't going to go up when they get under a senior freeze, I just heard it eliciting. If it's across the board, their taxes go up too. So maybe that's something that we need to check on. My second question is, and I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just really nervous.
Fine, you're doing your smart thing.
So, um, the state of Illinois has said by the year 2025, all pensions must be 100% funded. If I'm wrong in any, I mean, stop me at any time, 25, 25, that the state of Illinois, I don't know, does that apply to county and city? And if it does, what is our current deficit in unfunded pension? What's our unfunded pension deficit? And I apologize, I wasn't at the meeting before, I didn't realize. So what's our unfunded deficit, which is going to tell us how many years in a row our taxes are going to go up? I appreciate Ms. Swanson saying that people can handle more of a small increase, but to be honest, they really need to, I mean, a year reprieve would have been nice, but, um, we're, we're losing, we're losing residents. I don't, I don't know what the solution is, but taxing more and more will drive property values down even more. In closing, I ask you to seriously consider the consequences of choosing to raise taxes for the second year in a row. I encourage you to spend more time looking at the budget. We don't need more parks and recreation, we need more businesses, we need incentives for people to move, and we need more of that to cover our pension deficit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and you did a wonderful job. You're great. The answer to that real quick is the police and fire pensions are required to be 90% funded by the year 2041.
Okay.
Okay, unless they change anything, but that's what the current...
20, 2041.
2041, that's the current.
The finest in blue. We have a bad reputation.
Absolutely.
But aren't guys in blue, or some of the best in Quad Cities, and are I...
We talk about the police and fire pension as a negative and everything else, it is going up, it's high, it's, it's, it's a, it's a rich program, but they, they, that's what's been negotiated, they deserve it, absolutely, absolutely. Never short, I'm not, we're, I, and I don't think anybody up here is shortchanging them whatsoever. There was a few years way back when, when the city chose not to pay into the pensions, those pensions, and so we got behind a little bit because of that.
I just want anybody to think that I was talking about the guys in blue, because...
No, I don't think so.
You're never a pensionist.
I think I've talked to Schreiber, there was a, a couple of years they didn't. Yeah. But, uh, so, I think that's the only pension one, um, so thank you very much for coming. Is there, I know nobody else signed up, but it is open. Is there anybody else? For property taxes. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak about property taxes? All right. I'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. Item number 10.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding the calendar year 2020 budget.
Is there anybody that's signed up back there for that? I actually officially am closing the regular meeting and opening the public hearing. Did anybody sign up to talk about the calendar year budget? Anybody want to talk about the budget? I know you've already talked about it a lot, so not surprising, but I'll give anybody an opportunity, came in late.
Somebody signed up.
Nobody out there want to speak? All right. I will close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. Judith needs to catch up. We're on item number 11.
An ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 3, Division 2 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Video Gaming Licenses.
Move to consider suspending rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, is there any discussion?
Uh, just, just to clarify, this is what we discussed last council meeting.
Correct.
No changes since then. Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number 12.
Tax abatement resolutions, A through R. If anybody really wants me to read them all, I will, but...
Not really.
Okay.
Hey, looking for a motion.
You want a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm trying to find it on the agenda here. Move to approve the attached tax abatement resolutions and direct the finance director to file them with the county clerk.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion?
Uh, maybe Stephanie could just come up and say a few words, let people know what this is all about.
Sure, so it's a really long, uh, agenda item, so it looks kind of, uh, voluminous, but what this is, is this is basically directing the county to abate all of the taxes related to principal and interest payments on all of the city's general obligation bonds for the payments that would be due next year in the year 2020. So it's a very significant resolution, a very important thing that we do every year. We, in accounting, tick and tie these numbers to make sure we have them exactly correct, because if there were a mistake, what the county would do is then pass, uh, part of the levy, the levy would be increased by, um, whatever we don't represent here. So the total of all of these principal and interest payments that are due next year is about $6.1 million, and, uh, we basically have other funding sources for these principal and interest payments, including gaming funds, the utility funds, and the like. So hopefully that helps clarify what this is that you all are doing.
I have a quick question on letter M, which is tax abatement in the amount of $427,981, revenues from the hydro plant, parks, and gaming funds. So I'm assuming that, um, the majority of that is from gaming funds?
So the 2017A issue spanned each of those, spanned more than one project, so sometimes we issue bonds and it's more than one piece. The breakdown of that $427,000 between hydro plant, parks, and gaming, the gaming funds are likely related to street projects, and I actually did bring a schedule out, so if you could just humor me for a moment while I look at these really tiny numbers. So of that, um, the biggest part of the payment is actually for the parks, for RIFAC, so I believe we had, um, some building improvements there, probably, uh, well before 2017A. So 2017A was a refunding bond, so it refunded bonds that had been issued earlier. Um, so $215,000 of that $427,000 is coming from the parks fund. The second biggest portion is from the hydroelectric plant fund, and that is $127,000. And then the balance is related to a street project, and that would have been new money in 2017. New money meaning a project that had been completed recently in 2017.
Street project money from gaming funds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yes, any other questions?
Is this a comprehensive list of every single bond series that the city has?
Yes.
So, this, and, and so is this, when you added up all of the amount here, is that the amount that the city will pay in principal and interest this coming year?
Correct.
For all of our bonds?
Mm-hmm, $6.1 million.
Okay, so that gives some perspective as well, as we're talking about the budget as to our finances, is, we have, uh, whatever A through R numerically, that many bonds that the city...
18.
18 general obligation, or perhaps not only general obligation, but, uh, lots of bonds that we have to pay for that were bonded many years ago. FYI.
Okay. There's no further comment, we'll do a roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti's.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Poulos.
Aye.
Genon.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 13.
Claims, two claims, one group. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $11,683.24 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered for the month of November 2019. And B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one and final in the amount of $137,900. the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents to Precision Pavement Markings Incorporated of Pingree Grove, Illinois for the 2019 pavement marking program for services provided from August nineteenth, 2019 through September twenty-ninth, 2019.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A and B.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I have a question, please. On the first page, the memo of the staff report says it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and four dollars for payment number one and final. So, on the second page, the actual invoice has that amount, but then it also has at the top, contract amount, original one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty. And I wonder if anybody knows why there was a reduction in the original contract amount to what's being billed now?
It revolved around weather and not being able to complete all the projects.
So they didn't, they didn't complete all the striping?
The majority of it was done, but yes, and then we found some other locations that we originally budgeted for that did not need to be done, so they could push on to next year's project.
Okay, so the, if it didn't get done this year, it's on the list for next year.
Correct.
That's what I was kind of assuming, but I wasn't sure. The other thing I was just going to mention to you, last night, I went to gas up at Hy-Vee in Rock Island, and I noticed the striping around the area of Twenty-Fourth Street and Eighteenth Avenue is coming off.
At Twenty-Fourth and Eighteenth? At the intersection?
Yeah, at the intersection, yeah. There's a crosswalk, couple of crosswalks there, and some lines, and they're, they're not in the places where they started out.
I'll take a look at that, I'm not sure which project that was related to, whether it was Eighteenth Avenue or our maintenance contract that we're talking about here.
Nobody can look at it.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Both will be warranted.
Appreciate it.
Could you have a roll call, please?
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt. Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fourteen.
Claims for the weeks of November fifteenth, 2019, through November twenty-first, 2019, in the amount of six hundred and five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, and November twenty-second, 2019, through December fifth, 2019, in the amount of one million seven hundred and seventy-one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. And payroll for the weeks of November fourth, 2019, through November seventeenth, 2019, in the amount of one million five hundred and four thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and November eighteenth, 2019, through December first, 2019, in the amount of one million five hundred thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item fifteen.
Purchase card claims for the period of September twenty-seventh, 2019, through October twenty-eighth, 2019, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Note, this item was postponed from the November twenty-fifth, 2019 council meeting.
Motion to approve the purchase card claims.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number sixteen.
Report from the Finance Department regarding a contract renewal and equipment purchase for parking enforcement, recommending option number two for a one-time payment of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars to Professional Account Management LLC of Milwaukee, Wisconsin.
Move to approve the contract renewal and equipment purchase as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I have a comment. I read the memo and the following pages for the amendment to the agreement and the following pages after that of the actual invoice, and there's some costs that are associated that we're agreeing to that aren't, that are above and beyond the twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. For example, there's an additional four thousand eight hundred dollars for maintenance hosting, installation, support, and management fees, some of which are charged on a monthly basis. I just wanted the council to be aware of that. So we're approving the twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty, but we're also approving a five-year agreement which has more costs built into it. It doesn't mean I don't support it. I just, it's, I wanted everybody to be aware.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Nay.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Item number seventeen.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an ordinance for the levy assessment and collection of property taxes for the city of Rock Island for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2020, and ending December thirty-first, 2020, first reading.
I make a motion to consider the ordinance with a property tax levy of, oh, this is a big number.
Three point nine...
Yeah.
Four...
Thirteen...
Nine-three.
Yeah, anyhow, a very large number, which results in a levy increase of four point nine three percent and a property tax rate of three point nine three percent. Is that thirteen million?
Yes.
Okay, thirteen million three hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And it was... With the levy increase being four point nine three percent, taking off the EAV, and then the property tax rate at three point nine three percent.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I was initially strongly in favor of a four point five after listening to some of my constituents. I think that's a very reasonable motion.
And then just as a housekeeping matter, the statute requires, and we've talked about these reasons a lot, but during this phase, you just need to talk about shortly the reasons for the need for the levy. That's just to comply with the statute, even though we've been talking about it all evening.
Are you saying we need to talk about the...
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think it would be even sufficient to talk about this because of a budget shortfall, but I mean, I think that that, just that language...
Why there's an increase?
Yes, correct.
You, me, who is...
Go ahead, city manager.
Well, we've got the increase set to cover an increase in police and fire pensions, as well as a two percent increase to parks and library, and a small increase of eighty-six thousand, I think, into the general fund.
As we discussed in the study session prior to this, I respect my colleagues, I again commend all of you for all of your work that you've done in going through this budget with our staff. Again, I plan on voting against this ordinance, I guess is the formal, whatever it is, but I plan on voting against it on simply the grounds of I, I would prefer that we balance the budget without using the city's reserves.
Any other comment? Okay, roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
No.
Pulis.
Yes.
Geenan.
No.
Hurt.
Yes.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item number eighteen.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning January first, 2020, and ending December thirty-first, 2020, first reading.
Move to consider the ordinance as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item nineteen.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding modification of the residency ordinance for non-affiliated employees.
Move to approve the modification of the residency policy for non-affiliated employees as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number twenty.
Report from the Public Works Department recommending an increase of three percent in the wastewater rates for 2020.
Move to approve the wastewater rate increase as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I guess I was just going to mention, kind of generically, that we're not doing this just because we want more money. We have costs associated with our aging water facilities, and we need to pay for them, that's all.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Report from the Public Works Department recommending an increase of three percent in the stormwater rates for twenty, 2020.
Move to approve the stormwater rate increase as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I assume this is for all, to also repair some of the infrastructure?
It is, there's a couple of those projects that have been brought to attention from some of the aldermen that have been on our list.
Is this something that can be delayed, or is this something that is, is a necessity for the city to do right now?
Oh, well, Mr. Bartels come up and talk to that, certainly, they're pretty critical.
I wouldn't recommend delaying on the increase. We have projects all throughout the town, we have sinkhole issues, we have storm sewers collapsing and ravines, and our catch basins are collapsing in certain areas. I mean, the repairs are, never stop. We, we, the last time these were, these increases were done was in 2011, well, last year, but before that was 2011. Our rates are comparable to other municipalities locally. They budget a lot more funding than we do for our storm sewers, and we need to catch up and get the projects done that have been sitting here for a long time.
If I could add one thing, the second to the last line on the memo says the impact to the average household is thirty-six cents per quarter. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding surplus vehicles and equipment, recommending the items as stated in the report be declared as surplus.
Move, move to approve, the request is recommended, refer to the city attorney for an ordinance, and authorize staff to dispose of the surplus items in a manner that is advantageous to the city.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Pulis.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-three.
Report from the mayor regarding the appointment of Pat Stoli to the Arts Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Great pick.
What's that?
Great pick.
Thank you.
Good fifth-word artist.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item twenty-four is other business, is there anything the city council has to, would like to bring forth?
I just want to thank everybody for the calls, the emails, you showing up tonight and expressing your concern and your opinions regarding the decisions we make. I can speak for, I think, all of the council members up here that we do appreciate your comments, we do try to do the right thing for all the citizens, and I, I just want to thank you all for being here.
Is there anybody in the audience wish to speak? Anything else from council?
I haven't.
Do you have an announcement?
I do.
City clerk has an announcement.
Please bear with me, this is going to be difficult. I'm announcing my retirement. It is much sooner than I had planned. It is my, it's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Rock Island as their city clerk.